Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of October 26th, 2022. Would you all be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. If we could pan to the large screen to show the folks at home what's being discussed in tonight's town board meeting. Patrick, could you just zoom that in just a little bit on the agenda items? We are, we are having a public hearing, sort of. It's just going to be an extension at 7:35 to a later date for the Spectrum Annual Contract. And the agenda items otherwise are, most of them ministerial tonight. We're going to extend IMAs with Dutchess County. We have an easement here with our neighbor Rhinebeck Savings Bank related to underground electric line. We've got a change order related to that for fast chargers for the folks at home. We received a grant that in combination with Central Hudson's Make Ready is going to pay for a level three fast charger for any type of electric vehicle. And that will be located towards the back of our town parking lot. We're going to approve an extension to the contract for Dutchess County SPCA. And then have some discussion of, or at least beginning discussion of an application we received some time ago on potential rezoning. And that is from Petal Creek. And then just our department reports and committee and board reports. We do expect after our agenda items to go in for a very brief attorney-client session as well. We have tonight, 7:35, our public hearing, which is in essence to extend it once again to November 10th.
November 10th. Is that the date? I thought it was 16th.
Yeah.
2022, further extended from July 12th, 2022, further extended from August 29th, 2022, and further extended from September 28th, 2022. Will be held by the Town Board, the Town of Red Hook at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, on the 26th day of October, 2022, at 7:35 PM. To your all interested persons on a proposed franchise renewal agreement between the Town of Red Hook and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charred Communications Incorporated. Spectrum has submitted an application to construct and operate a cable television system within the Town of Red Hook and has requested a grant by the Town Board of a non-exclusive franchise. Town Board has the authority to grant said franchise pursuant to Town Law Section 64.7 after holding a duly noticed public hearing that affords the public the opportunity to provide comment. The Town Board has determined that pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C7, the proposed franchise renewal agreement constitutes a Type II action as defined under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA. All interested persons will be given the opportunity to be heard by email, telephone, and in person at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, or at Town Clerk@redhookny dot gov, or by phone 8457584606 by 4 o'clock the day of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 8457584606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board, the Town of Red Hook dated October 3rd, 2022, Deanna Cockburn, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and entertain opening the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, Christine, Jacob?
Aye.
Would anybody like to speak on this? It's a draft now several months old. We keep waiting on a couple of small but important issues to be resolved with Spectrum. And so, fingers crossed, maybe we'll have that ready by November 10th.
So on the calendar, you have November 16th still. Which is the next town board meeting?
We're doing November 10th as our next town board meeting because the November 8th was Election Day.
Well, I'm aware, but the clerk now has the 16th on the calendar, so you might want to make sure the board...
I also have the 16th.
So let's extend it to the 16th then, and let's do 7:35 again.
So that's going to be just the public hearing, or that's going to be our replacement meeting?
Just the public hearing at 7:35.
I think it's the replacement meeting.
That's the replacement meeting.
Yeah.
But the meeting, are you still meeting on the 10th?
No.
So you're meeting on the 16th as a rescheduled regular meeting?
Yeah. We can do the 16th for the public hearing.
Does that work for you?
All right, at this time, I'd make a motion that we... Adrian, go ahead.
You have meetings, you have public hearings scheduled for the fire protection districts? So I'm not sure what the time is. Deanna might have that?
Yeah, so let's do, I'll make it for a little later. November 16th at 7:50 PM. Would you like to second that motion, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay. Will we live long enough to get that contract renewed? All right, very good. Patrick, would you be kind enough to pick us two announcements? The first scary announcement is the village is having their Halloween parade. Departed from the parking lot at 1 o'clock on Saturday, this upcoming Saturday. Lineup is at 12:30, and you return to get cider doughnuts because we need more cider doughnuts, some of us. You would be amazed with how many cider doughnuts are being sold at our local farms. We talk about economic development, just how much activity is now going on in many of our farms, including several thousand cider doughnuts being sold in one farm only just a couple of weekends. Next up, just as important, if not more so, we have early voting coming up. And Patrick, if you could zoom in a little bit so people get a little better. Let's do fullscreen and then if you will, please.
It won't let me do fullscreen zoom mode. Yeah, I can either do presentation mode or I can zoom.
Okay, well, that's good. We'll work out with that. So folks are now starting to get familiar with early voting. It starts, generally speaking, this Saturday prior to the weekend before Election Day. So this is October 29th, once again. Mostly it's nine to five. There are a couple of days, which typically are Tuesday and Thursday, which have some alternate hours. The closest location, but not the only location that you can vote at, is Rhinebeck Town Hall, right there across from Rhinebeck Village Hall and by their firehouse on Market Street. I would like to just put in a plug for folks. If you have the ability to vote early in one of those, on one of those occasions, I would encourage you to do so. You would be doing your neighbors and your friends a favor because the more folks that can vote early, the shorter the lines will be on general election day. And, you know, as we know, many, many folks here are trying to juggle families' work and voting on Election Day, so.
And just to be clear, for early voting, you can vote at any one of those locations. So if one of those happens to be close to where you work or something, you can vote there.
Yeah.
And right on Election Day, you have to vote at your polling place. But in early voting, you can vote at any of those locations in the county.
Right. And what is different this year because of the change in New York state election law is if you've requested an absentee ballot, you may not show up in person and vote. You will have to vote with that absentee ballot. So that is a change for some folks. I know some folks, if they thought they were going to be out of town and it turns out they weren't that day, have oftentimes gone in. The system knows how to recognize that, but New York state law has changed, so you won't be able to do that if your plans change. Okay, next up on announcements, Red Hook Repair Cafe is back. For those of you who have had things breaking around your house like I have, this is your opportunity. There are volunteers, as always. Again, this is on a Saturday, but this one is November 5th at the Community Center, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And there are some examples of what can be fixed by our volunteers. There are no warranties to the work. You get what you pay for. Okay, and there we are. And the VFW seems to have lots of events. This one, obviously, they have every year. If you would like to join us, there will be a Veterans Day memorial service, as always, 7 p.m. on November 11th over at Memorial Park. I don't think it says, does it say that there? No, yes, it does. Okay. Next, that's what we've got. All right, public comments before we go ahead to the agenda items. Anybody have? Okay, here we go. Let's dive right on in. The first item on the agenda is authorizing the execution of an extension of intermunicipal agreement with Dutchess County regarding assistance from county with central purchasing services. Occasionally, we partner with the county to do procurement, and they charge us an hourly rate. And so this is just an extension of that pre-existing agreement. And that would be from November 1st to October 31st. And Deanna, this would be resolution number?
69.
69?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, town board members? Okay, if not, I assume we'll move for resolution number 69 to extend that intermunicipal agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Christine Kane, all in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Next up is resolution number 70. It's an easement. We want to thank, of course, Rhinebeck Savings Bank for allowing the town to utilize the very edge of their property to take the three-phase line back to where the transformer will be and the fast charging station. And once again, a good example of how working together, public-private partnership, we're able to also, at the same time, when the trenching is done, accommodate a sleeve so that in the future, if they were to want to do this as well, that they won't have to dig up on the area again and obviously risk hurting the work that's being done. So, any questions on this? Pretty straightforward, straight running back towards the arm there. Okay, resolution number 70. Who would like to move that?
I move, so moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, moving right along. There was a change order, obviously, when the location was to put it towards the back there, introduce a hole over towards the other side of our driveway. And so that's the change order. Again, reminding the folks at home, we have a grant, and we anticipate that Central Hudson's Make Ready program to encourage will pick up what we hope to be all the remaining difference there. If there is a cost, it will be nominal in nature to the town. This is resolution number 71. The date will be, of course, today, October 26th, authorizing the change order for the Town of Red Hook Fast Charging Pedestals. Any questions, any comments? All right, and I assume move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're making quick order. We've got a resolution number 72. Is that where we are? Dog control. Bill, Chris, do you want to summarize those differences in the current contract with SPCA and the town proposal?
Sure. Of course, there is an increase in the cost from last year, as expected. Fairly nominal. But they also included a change for emergency after-hours calls, basically on, you know, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. There's an unlimited number of those, but those ones that happen after-hours are on the weekends. They're incurring a service charge for either in-person or telephonic consultation if there's more than three emergency calls in a month. Since I've been here, there's never been more than three in a month. And in fact, almost every month, there's, you know, none. April of this year, there were three, but it's unusual. And all the other months this year, there were zero. The other significant change was that they, it had to do with who assumes the cost of treating the dog or stabilizing the dog. And in the past, you know, the town is not, it's always the dog owner is responsible, but if a dog owner can't be identified, stray, then there's the issue of what's going to happen with the dog. And so my understanding is that traditionally, there's a cap. We can't have a third-party contractor just be able to allocate, spend government money without a limit. So we've agreed with them that there'd be a cap of $500 for any stabilization and any cost after that would be borne by them. And so those were really the primary changes. Am I missing anything, Chris?
No, I think those are the primary edits that they have given us. There's a boarding, the boarding cost increased as well from $40 to $50 a day, which was a significant increase. But they did indicate that they're having staffing issues too, so.
Yes, that was part of their issue with having the emergency service be kept at 3:00 in the morning for after-hours just because of their staffing problems. So those were the changes from last year.
Great. This is resolution 72. Any further questions, town board members? No. Bill, would you like to move the resolution to approach next year's contract?
Yes, so moved.
And I'll second that. And all in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Patrick, there we are, okay. Patrick, can you take us to a map of this property? There you go, okay. For the folks at home, we, from time to time, not very frequently, honestly, but from time to time, we get applications to consider, contemplate a change in zoning on a particular parcel or a particular area. And this parcel, a very small parcel on the corner of Barrytown Road and Route 9G, we have an application from Petal Creek Farm. They operate, they grow flowers, I believe, mostly flowers, horticulture, just over the border on the town of Mylan. Jake and Jesse, who many of us know because of the business they had in Tivoli over the years. And so they've asked us to consider for this parcel that they've recently acquired whether or not we would consider changing the zoning from residential into agricultural business district. Right now, it's rural development, five-acre zone. It's what we would call a non-conforming lot. It doesn't meet the minimum specifications for its current designation. And so, short of, you know, we've had some initial review by our planner talking about what else would be required in order to consider a full-blown application. But I thought we would at least initially start out with some discussion about the opportunity that the zoning presents and how this may or may not comport, haven't used that word in a while, fit in with what the zoning allows for. So, Chris, I'm wondering, can we go through, perhaps, I can pull up if you'd like, my laptop. Can we go through the definitions for petitioning into the agricultural business district and take a look? You want me to see if I can do that?
Yeah, I mean, code 14239.1B.
Okay, Patrick, can you get online?
General code, yeah.
Yeah, general code, or just go to the town's website. Yeah, just go to the town's website. Okay. There you go. Town of Red Hook, okay, go to Explore Red Hook. You'll get to important links, go to important links. Thank you. This is a tutorial for the folks at home as well, right? The general code better be there, or it's not going to look good for me. Keep going, keep going.
Ecode zoning there.
Ecode zoning? Town of Red Hook, Chapter 143, and?
39.1.
Do you think I have it in memory? Okay. You can put, yeah, keep going, scroll, scroll all the way to the 39. Okay, point 1.
Okay, now we're going to 39.1.
There you go.
And B, so we got a little bit more.
Go down to B?
There we go.
There you go. Okay. Perfect.
All right, so applicability. The AB district is hereby established as a zoning district as shown in the Town of Red Hook's zoning map. All right, Chris, would you like to lead us for a discussion of the definition?
Because it is, you have to parse it.
You do, yeah.
So then you can talk about the policy of the part. So the first part is if a landlord is...
And if I could ask you to speak up a little bit, just so you make it to the microphone?
Sorry, right, the microphone. So a landowner whose land is not in the AB may petition, and the Town Board may amend to include that land if it's always got to be consistent with the con plan and it has to be these criteria. So the land that we're talking about rezoning has to contain at least 50% important farmland and be a farm. So that's the first test, okay? So if you have, for example, I mean, in this particular case, looking at the particular lot that you have, it's mine, you said in front Ted's review, our planner's review, that this particular parcel does not consist of important farmlands based on the soils map. Those are soils classifications. It's a whole other definition, but they don't consist of important farmlands. So, and obviously, in itself is not a farm. So then the second part of that is, or be in addition to a conserved farm. A conserved farm being a farm that has a conservation use to protect agricultural and soil uses as, you know, supporting in the farm zoning, in the town zoning. And then, so be in addition to a conserved farm which adjoins or is in close proximity to the property. So again, close proximity, it has to be a conserved farm that we're talking about. You know, the other parcel, if this parcel happens to be adjoining or in close proximity to another property that is a conserved farm, that's a reason to consider this treatment. And then, so that's the first part of the test. It seems like this particular property, based on Ted's analysis, does not meet that first part of the test. So then there's an or. The land, because it's, because of its location within or adjacent to those lands we talked about above, meaning either within or adjacent to a conserved farm, right? Or I think within or adjacent to a farm with 50% important farmland. So it's got to be within or adjacent to, meaning next to, right? A, one of those farm properties. And because of its undeveloped nature, large size, or siting amidst farmlands, is valuable to include in the AB district to prevent proliferation of conflicting adjacent uses that could jeopardize the future survival of farming within the district. So that's the second test, that it's available. And again, I think it's not adjacent to, as far as, you know, Ted's review, doesn't seem to be adjacent to those lands. You know, he looked at the evaluation of the parcel in Mylan. I think it's an open question as to whether or not, if a parcel is not within the town, it could be considered in this test, but, you know, the town might want to consider that in a proper case. You know, if you have farm property across the line and another parcel that is adjacent to that farm and works with that farm, you know, that may be worthy of AB consideration, even if it wouldn't be an AB on its own. But that's not exactly the situation that you have here.
All right, but that's pretty tricky. I can't imagine our Red Hook farmers would want us to set a precedent where we would establish retail agricultural operations, whatever for farmers from outside of our community. I think that, you know, there are so many challenges for farmers that, and that's a very...
Well, I guess that's an issue that you can look at another day.
Yes, another day. That's a policy issue, and I'm sure we'd want our farmers to weigh in on that question.
Well, it does, sorry. It does seem like a stretch based on this. And we do have two other options, two farm market options.
Yeah.
So maybe those fit better.
Yeah, potentially. You know, they might want to explore either the current zoning or another different type of zoning for that parcel. It'd be nice to see something at that parcel, something that would be added into the community. And certainly, there are people who are, you know, going just north of there to Montgomery Place Farm Market, very popular market. Now, that's a little bit different. It's a little bigger. It's got more parking. It's not at the intersection. So there's some, definitely some traffic challenges with this corner. Can you put the visual back up, Patrick, for the folks to see? This is a tiny little corner. Yeah, and could you put your subject property, there we go. It's just half an acre. Yeah, right there, Barrytown Road and 9G. And Patrick, could you point out where 199 is, just north there? Yeah, 199. Across the way is the Jehovah's Witness property right there. So just to familiarize folks at home, the location. It's really hard to understand as a precedent how we could take .6 acre parcels that aren't adjacent to a conserved farm and put that within.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, this would be a rezoning. And AB allows a lot of different uses to help farms, it's the idea from right now, which would, if it was to be rezoned, would stay with the property. So if this happened and hopefully would operate great, but if something happened and it closed, it would remain AB and have lots of other opportunities. You know, I mean, as I mentioned, I would be interested to see, because we do have Farm Market 1 and 2, which are, you know, the same basic opportunities to give farms that do not have, you know, a good spot on their farm to have a farm market for, you know, traffic or parking or whatever, to give them the opportunity to have a farm market. It does not bring, it's not a rezoning, it's a use, and it doesn't bring all of the attendant implications. attendant, um, implications of changing it to A B district, so...
Are we sure they would qualify though for...
Well, I, we have to look, or they'd have to look into it more, they'd have to look at, but there are, you know, our, there's two other options anyway, if they want a farm market, there's two other options they could explore within our zoning.
And really, based on my review of the application, what they're looking to do is basically establish a retail market. And that property, prior to being summed as residential, was a business, it was, I think, a, a, a gas station.
Gas station.
And I don't know the history of why, after that business went out of business, it was rezoned to residential, and I would really wanna explore what the basis of that rezoning was. Um, but, you know, we're talking about application for a farm, this is really, in many ways, from what I read, an application for a retail business. And, um, there are issues with having things zoned as agricultural business. The main one that troubles me for something this small and so far away from an adjacent, from a farm, is that you, the town relinquishes certain regulatory control over the operation of that business to the state, state ag markets. And I can say from being on the planning board and being on this board, that the state's goals and objectives aren't always in complete alignment with what the town, and it's on a state highway, and so I, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of relinquishing that control to the state of New York. I'd rather, you know, I, I'm not uncomfortable with the business being there, I'm uncomfortable with, with the bar. The, the other issue is the precedent issue, I, I, I'm troubled by the idea that if the board were to rezon this as A B, uh, any other landowner in the town of Red Hook who owned a point-six of an acre in residential or any other, uh, could make an application to the board to rezone it, and if the town board said no, they'd say, hey, well, you did it for those people. Um, and that's kind of a tough argument to overcome, so I, you know, precedent's an important thing, and I, and I wouldn't wanna subject the town to, you know, a, a lot of litigation over something that was even easily preventable and trying to find another alternative for this applicant.
So, does it sound like we have consensus that it doesn't re, meet the definitional requirement, that it doesn't pass either number one or number two, the options that are available?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's a, I'll make the phone call. Just tell them where, where we are right now. We're thinking, obviously, if they made an application, there were more documents and studies required, but I, before they go ahead and spend too much money on this, we would wanna get them, you know, what, what we're seeing, just as far as what the, the code says and, and whether or not there's a possibility to, to meet that, and it doesn't look like it. Okay, uh, Patrick, we're next on to reports. There's some of the documents submitted, there we go, work commission, okay, one back there, Patrick, is it the, no. Very good, uh, rec commission, oh, we don't, I wasn't giving this report. Christine is.
Yep. Uh, okay, so, um, it's, um, as usual, the rec department is quite busy, and there's a, you know, the, the change of season aspect to the report this month, as many of the, um, summer and early fall programs are finishing up, uh, and, um, some of the, preparing the park for the winter has begun. Um, for instance, the over forty men's softball league completed, um, and, um, I just would like to say that, uh, I think we need to look at user fees also for the park, so we, to put that on our agenda. Uh, skate park improvements faced to our, um, well, underway, we're expecting delivery of the, um, next, um, batch of equipment, uh, in November, so hopefully that will be here soon. Um, we have a, a fall use, a flag football league, um, is, uh, happening now, Knights of Columbus Flag Football, and they have the actual games at Red Park West, but they do practice on the all-purpose field at Red Park East. Um, winterizing certain things, uh, at the park is gonna be starting soon, uh, water, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, some of the other completions in connection with, um, some of the baseball fields have been completed. Uh, we still have some outstanding items about moving the dirt pile that's there, uh, and, um, fixing the storage shed. We have someone who is now in charge of all the field scheduling, so we, because we have so many different users, um, who want to use the different fields, particularly the all-purpose field. And, um, for all of the pickleball players out there in this very fast-growing sport, um, we do have pickleball court, pickleball courts, which are pretty much mobbed, so, um, it's something else we may wanna look into in the future.
There was a large article, so in New York Times.
Yes, about injuries related to pickleball. We're not as young as we once were as agile, are we? I know, I saw mine at my neighbor, and said, how was your game today?
Well, and actually, one of the things that we are seeing, all age groups.
Yeah?
On the pickleball courts.
Oh, absolutely.
So, it's getting used by all age groups, and, you know, speaks to the popularity of the sport nationwide.
Yeah.
So, that's it. Thanks again to our great rec department, it's amazing what they get done.
Yeah, absolutely. And if the weather's light, today's weather, we'll be playing pickleball in the front room. Maybe. Okay, um, shall we do tree preservation?
Yep, couple of quick notes, um, so this is from the monthly report from October eighteenth, so last week, um, for the fall tree planting, there were sixteen trees that were meant to be delivered today, um, with planning scheduled for Saturday morning. Um, the committee is still researching current inventory technologies for tree inventory for the town. Um, there's continuing education for committee members through Cornell Cooperative Extension of Nassau County, um, so those are online webinars that, um, members of the Tree Preservation Commission will be, um, participating in. And then, um, on a final downer note, the missing tree city sign, um, no progress has been made on that, so we continue to work on that to replace the sign. Yeah.
I think we'll have to order a new one, and, you know, speaking of signs, can we do something about that sign, I think, does it chamber the sign on nine G as you come from the bowling alley?
Yep.
Area?
The old bowling one.
The old bowling alley, it's higher up here.
Yeah, I know that's something that...
I think we need to look at, let's, let's, uh, let's put our heads together, let's get a nice sign done.
Yeah, I know that, um, the Chamber's interested in, you know, replacing or updating it, you know, that sign in particular, because I think they're the ones who own it, so, I came up in an EDC meeting a couple weeks ago.
Well, maybe we should, I don't know, if we can't do something about it soon, maybe we should think about removing it, it's, it's, you know, half-broken now, right?
Yep.
It doesn't send quite that message.
The message we're hoping for.
Right. Okay, uh, dog control report.
All right.
Sir?
It was a relatively quiet month, which is good. Um, and as the chart shows, there have been no dangerous dogs except for in April. Uh, loose and related dogs is, there, you know, dogs get loose, uh, they may call, but they're not dangerous, there was two. Uh, nuisance dogs, I think as the weather starts to get a little colder, sometimes you'll see fewer of those people bring their dogs in, they're not outside barking. Uh, cats, uh, as I've told the, the board before, feral cats are a significant problem in Dutchess County, um, my understanding from the, uh, Dutchess County SPCA is there are approximately twenty thousand feral cats.
Wow.
Uh, in the county, they have a program for dealing with them, um, but they are an issue, and so that's why they have that as a category, and wildlife, um, is usually raccoons and, uh, deer, there were none, so it was a quiet month.
Thank you, we don't have a lot of cats on the farm, there's so many coyotes.
The coyotes have been busy.
Taking care of them, yeah. Got one of our goats unfortunately, but coyotes. Okay, uh, next up, police report.
That would be me too, right?
Yes, Bill.
So, September was a somewhat busy month for the police department, for the village, uh, which we contract with, there were a hundred and eleven incidents, um, many of them benign, uh, but they still have to respond to the call, there were, they issued twenty-three traffic summonses or uniform traffic tickets, and they did make four arrests, um, the underlying information provides the, you know, the locations by, uh, by what the nature of the call was, whether it was a burial, armed, accident, larceny, uh, impounding, uh, you know, the car, things of that, that nature, so, you know, it gives the details. And, and also, the village of Timbly has just entered into a contract with the village to provide their services as well.
I see there were five incidents reported in the SRO of Mill Road. Is Bill in there?
SRO, let's see.
I was just curious, though.
Oh, the school resource officer, that, you know, that could be anything, um, and, you know, they, they do medical emergencies, which are counted here, but...
Okay.
There could be, you know, it, it could be an issue that, uh, they had to transport Timbly to the hospital, and they're often the first responders.
Okay.
I can follow up if you like.
Sure, I mean, if, when you're speaking to them...
Yeah, sure.
I mean, you don't have to make a separate call, but I was curious. Okay, next up, we, uh, oh, building and zoning.
Wasn't that the...
I have a little, those in today, then, we got that report.
So, for October, um, which is almost over, they issued thirty-one permits, they had eighty-nine inspections, there were twenty certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion done, no complaints, and the revenue from all the permitting was still at a thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. It's a very long report, it's, uh, probably a half an inch thick, but it gives the details of all the different kinds of permits that are issued, inspections that are conducted, the general, it gives the general tenure of the construction that's done and being joined to town.
Great. Thank you very much, they're still busy, obviously, we're starting to hear reports of, uh, slowdown in the real estate sector, but these projects, many of them were underway or contemplated a while back, we'll see, we'll see what's next. Uh, highway, our highway superintendent, um, uh, sends as part of the report, um, just a description of the, uh, different trucks that we utilize and their plowing span and their weight and, um, their capacity for salt and how, um, big trucks can go a longer, uh, distance and time with one load of salt as part of the report. And I'd like to let you know if you'd ever like to ride along and plow along with one of the crew, you're welcome to do that. Uh, next up, we, uh...
There's also surplus equipment sale.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, the public, sorry, you're not allowed to, yeah, just, just as part of an education.
I was ready to sign off.
Well, maybe, maybe that's part of...
Might be good to put this photo up there for everybody to see.
Uh, it's, it's sideways.
We can't rotate it.
I can rotate it.
Can you rotate it up there? You might be able to.
I might be able to, but it might take some troubleshooting.
No, there you go, right there, that's a rotation.
There you go. Rotate everything, but for now, we can rotate it back, okay?
Okay, just so you see the difference.
So, those are the types of trucks, pile trucks we have.
Yeah. And, uh, we do have, we do have a lot of, I feel like that's an old photo, in fact, it's pretty confident, I don't know, but, yeah, anyway. Next up.
Okay. Next up.
What do we have?
There you go.
That'll go. Oh, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, and I don't have to reorganize here, at the last meeting, remember, we didn't have back from the water board the, um, direction to go ahead and to appoint Phil McDougall, who was here that night?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I would like to... Deanna. The term, um, that's open on the water board.
I'll just look it up.
I will speak very slowly while Deanna's looking up on the rest. So, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Philip McDougall, and thank you, Philip, for, uh, offering your time and energy towards, uh, joining the water board, an important time as well, um, to the Town of Red Hook Water District Advisory Board for a two-year term, expiring...
Almost there.
I didn't speak slow enough. Nobody's ever told me that.
So, the Water District or Water Board?
Yes.
Um...
The term ending...
Twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two, it's two-year appointment?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two. Okay, well, so, we're gonna be, we're gonna end up reappointing you again in just short order, it sounds like.
Assuming there's a...
So, we don't have an opening to, it's just a twenty-twenty-four?
Yeah.
No, it's the only opening that exists on the water board, so we'll get reappointed again.
Okay.
Okay.
Since we don't have it in front of us, good to clarify.
Uh, and I assume, is there a second, Bill Hamel?
Second.
He's onto the water board. One in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Folks, um, any public comments? If not, this is a very brief meeting, um, we hope that you're, uh, staying healthy. We're approaching that time of the year again, all the pundits say we're about to get five different viruses this winter, so, um, we, uh, wish you the best, um, as we enter into winter. Um, at this time, before we close the meeting, I would like to entertain a motion to go into a brief attorney-client, uh, session. Is there a second?
So moved, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second. Somebody move?
Yeah, I was just sure that you moved.
We can do that again.
Okay.
No, Christine moved.
Okay, so moved.
Jacob seconded.
Aye.
One in favor? Aye, we'll be back, um, if we take any action, um, later on this evening, we're gonna go in the conference room. Goodnight all, thanks very much for coming.
Thanks.